Looks like we have. Chair. One, two, three. Okay, Chair Vitan, it looks like we have a quorum. I'm trying to see who we're missing. We're missing Commissioner Navarrete, it looks like. The moment. And then Commissioner. Alternate Commissioner. Guatieris. Chair Vitan, can you hear me? Wait a minute, there we go.
Hey, everyone. Major apologies. I'm at a conference and I got some unfortunate news from a family member, so. I'm gonna try to pull through the meeting. I got a message from. Commissioner Navarrete that I think he's not able to. Connect to the wifi, that's another thing in the hotel, it's not as reliable. So I don't know if he's in the. I don't know if we can check that, Gabe.
Yeah, we'll check it right now.
Do we, do we have a quorum?
We do have a quorum. Yeah, there's no, everyone's on the meeting right now.
Okay.
We do have a quorum, but I don't see Commissioner. Now, but at the end, in the waiting room.
Okay. Okay, we'll get started and. Hopefully, he's able to join. One second, I'm gonna. Okay, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 6:04 PM. And let's see. I'll go ahead and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So if you can stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the. One nation. Thank you. Can we please get roll call? You're muted.
Commissioner Lial.
Person.
Commissioner Figueroa. Vice Chair Navarrete. Absent.
He's, he's in the, he's in the attendees list.
Are you seeing that?
Yeah.
Oh, he said he's in.
There we go. Thank you. All right, let me do it again. Welcome, Commissioner Navarrete, just. Dream roll call, see if you're present.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
And then alternate Commissioner Guatieris. And then see, absent, Chair Vitan.
Here. I'm sorry. Did you call co-chair Navarrete?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on to approval of the agenda. At this time, the commission may announce any items being pulled from the agenda or continued to another date. Or request the moving of an item on the agenda. Do we have any requests?
No request from staff.
Gabe, I think we. I think we got an email regarding one of the items, I don't know if this is when we would mention it, or we would. Do, or we would continue the item until we get to that.
Yeah, when we get to the item, yeah, we did get a request from the applicant for the item.
Okay.
About a continuation, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on, we're gonna move on to approval of the minutes. This is draft planning commission meeting minutes for March 7, 2022. And if everyone got an opportunity to take a look at the minutes, do we have any changes or recommendations? Okay, see none. Can we get a motion to approve meeting minutes for March 7, 2022?
Motion is presented.
Thank you, can we get a second?
I'll go second, Commissioner Figueroa's. Motion.
Okay, thank you, and can we get roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Lial. Commissioner Lial. I. Commissioner Figueroa.
I.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi.
Vice Chair Navarrete.
Hi.
Chair Vitan.
Hi. Thank you. We're gonna move on to written communications, do we have anything, Gabe?
There are none.
Okay. So now moving on to public comments for non-agenda items, the public may address the commission on any item of interest to the public. That is not on the agenda, but is within the subject matter jurisdiction thereof. Please limit your comments to three minutes, do we have any public comments at this time? Let me look at the.
I don't see any public comments.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on to reports and requests. Do we have any reports from staff or any requests from fellow commissioners?
Nothing from staff.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to non-hearing items, and this is our first item. Item number two is a presentation on urban greening and heat island effect, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Chair Vitan, so a lot of you, you know Jacob Alvarez, he is our assistant to the city manager. And so he knows quite a bit about this topic, so I'd just like to introduce him and thank him for making this presentation to the planning commission today.
I'll go ahead and jump on, thank you guys for having me today. I haven't presented before in front of the planning commission, so I'm. You guys have any questions, I'll take them at the end and let's go ahead, I might try to make this fun and. Quick, I'm not gonna make it too nerdy, so we'll go from there. See. I'm assuming you guys could all hear me well. Okay, so. Let me go from here. Okay, so like. Mr. Perez said, my name is Jacob Alvarez, assistant to the city manager. I'm also on Icarp. As a good government person, as a good government would do, they give you a huge, huge name to go along with that, so it's the governor's office of planning and researches. Integrated Climate Adaptation Resiliency Program, technically, technical advisory member, and then I put the website there. Just that you guys know, there's only like, there's about eighteen to twenty members, and there's only about three city representatives in whole, and we are one of them, and that particular member. Through the state of California, through the OPR, Office of Plan and Research, they basically come to terms with that we are going to be living with climate, climate change. And as such, the state of California has put a group like us together to kind of discuss not only mitigation efforts, but. Things that we could do to adapt to the changes of our climate. This presentation I've used before, actually at the state level for Icarp, but I also have presented this to SCAG, and I made a few adaptations to it. But one thing is like, obviously, we have our own urban greening projects, I'll be highlighting that. And this is one thing I like to show folks that are from out of our area of how many things that are actually near the project and near downtown. And why we actually scored so well, so I'm sure all of you are familiar with all those places. These are some pre-construction pictures here. The Grapefruit Boulevard project seeks to create innovative green spaces and only help revitalize the community, but to provide environmental benefits while creating social connectivity. I grew up in Coachella as a kid, my grandfather actually had a store right next to Loops Hardware that was Perez Paints. So for as long as I could remember, this is technically what it looks like. There may have been more hay and feed stores along the area, but essentially, it's always been like this, and there was always. In terms of storms and stuff, there was always storms creating issues. About the project. So. We're looking at, the project will have a total of two hundred and eighty trees, a hundred and forty-four on each side, as you can see there, we're looking for native drought tolerant plants. This is a five point three four million dollar climate resiliency project that was granted three point one nine million from the large, which was the largest awarded by the state back in 2019. This was awarded by California's Natural Resources Agency's Urban Greening Project. The grant was one of twenty infrastructure projects funded by the cap and trade funds. Revenue is also known as greenhouse gas reduction fund. The Grapefruit Boulevard, Urban Greening Project, Connectivity Project, improvements will use elements that mimic natural systems, such as the. Two hundred and eighty plants that I mentioned before, which will constitute valuable urban and community forest resources that contribute significantly to human health and quality of life. Beyond aesthetic value and social well-being, the trees will provide essential, essential ecosystem services that clean the air, protect and clean water, support biodiversity. Shelter businesses from blistering summer heat while assisting in conserving energy. The trees and plants will soften the harsh lines of city street skates and help moderate temperatures, help moderate temperatures and solar radiation for pedestrians and bicyclists. Here's some of the tree implant toilet that we used in the project. One thing that I have been doing for a while, in terms of my role as Icarp member, is looking at. Providing or speaking about providing habitat for native species and pollinators. We're actually currently in an extinction level six event where we're losing a lot of our species on the planet. Whether there are local ones or ones that are migrating. Whoever, for you as planning commissioners, could introduce native species that will help along with this. It gives them, you know, obviously shelter, it gives them food, it gives them a place to rest if they're in transport. And then you gotta keep in mind, too, we're one of the largest agricultural areas in the state of California. And these pollinators definitely help out our, one of our largest. Economy sectors. Now, when I give this presentation, you gotta imagine a lot of people will know the idea of Coachella and Coachella Fest or Palm Springs, but they don't really know. What our environment looks like, so a lot of times I'll give them a picture of this. And, and they're kind of blown away because they're used to the pools and the hotels and the dancing people. And then I show them, you know, this is kind of how hot it gets for us in the valley, you know, where all that, that was even melting the street. And then I explain to them, you know, their animals look like this, you know, cute and fuzzy. Meanwhile, these are our animals, we gotta keep in mind that these little cute guys here. Have been adapting to our environment for, for millions and millions of years. And so much so, you know, I like to throw a joke in there once in a while, and I'm showing, obviously, my age is that even our actors have adapted to our climate. And if you guys don't know who this is, I, I suggest you look him up. So, as we know, when we go to the store, we know shade makes it cooler. You know, naturally, we find shade wherever we could go. And one of the things that, while working at Sebag, because that's where I used to work before. We noticed that she, you know, tree shade offers a lot in terms of building, and when we were doing our green. Was it called our Green for Life project, which was looking to utilize building. Better than code by fifteen percent. And so I'm looking at easy things like this that are not cost prohibitive, actually help reduce energy consumption, and it's been proven. Now, I don't usually like reading from slides, but I'm gonna have to go ahead and do it for this case. Heat Islands, Heat Islands are urbanized areas that experience high temperatures than outline areas. Structures such as buildings, roads and other infrastructure absorb and re-emmit, re-emmit the sun's heat for natural landscapes such as forests and waters. Daytime temperatures in urban areas are about one to seven degrees Fahrenheit higher than temperatures in outline areas, and at nighttime temperatures are above two to five degrees higher. I would like to note the little green square there, it's a heat. Urban heat islands nighttime temperatures can be as much as twenty-two degrees higher than heat is gradually released from the building, as heat is gradually released from buildings or pavement. So as you can imagine. You know, here we are at night, and it's still, you know, we know it could get to eighty to ninety degrees. But given if we're living in a neighborhood or we're near a commercial area, we're gonna have actually a hotter area around during at nighttime. And if your AC, your air conditioner is kicking on, you know, I like to say anywhere a couple of degrees, you know, I keep my house at around seventy-two. So if it's a hundred degrees because of, of the heat island effect outside. Your AC is kicking on more times throughout the night, and therefore utilizing that energy, putting up our residents' energy costs. And this is even if it's new construction or old, you know, your AC is constantly kicking on to try and keep you comfortable. And you gotta keep in mind that if your house or your, your, your building is older, you're gonna have a lot more cracks and crevices that. This heat is constantly trying to attack that envelope and find its way in, and from that, you're gonna go ahead and have higher. Air conditioning bills, and if you're like me, you don't really have a heating bill because you don't put it on, you just use more blankets. During the winter. So causes of heat island, reduced natural landscapes in urban areas, so a lot of times you find in. Areas like ours, I'm trying to think of the term that we use. Anyways, in terms of, you know, we're not the Palm Deserts, we're not the cities that have large incomes coming in. Lot of times what you find is that the hard states end up being more. Out there, and so with less green, and it hasn't been until recently, at least in the past ten years that I've noticed in Coachella. That we have actually started promoting more greensapes around the community and meetings as well. So when you have those areas that are just hard materials, they're constantly sucking in that heat and then releasing it at night. Obviously, human activity, which is air conditioners that are generating heat, if you're near a, a, a trail road, you're gonna get the heat from. Either the asphalt or the tires rubbing the road, or just from the combustion engine driving by, and then, of course, weather and geography. Play a role in, keep in mind, as you guys already know, the, the folks that are with great risk. Are obviously are older adults, outdoor workers, people with existing conditions, children, infants, pregnant women. I thought athletes was kind of funny. People who live alone, homeless people and people with limited resources. The desert environment is changing, presenting challenges like that for growing and maintaining healthy trees with the best. In the last twenty years, the average temperature has exceeded the long-term average, so we're seeing the, from the Palm Springs particular. Gauge, we're seeing anywhere from five to six degrees Fahrenheit over the past forty years. Other indicators of climate change affecting trees include drought, which we have, heat waves, of course, we have record-setting temperatures, which we've done all this year, and of course. Increases in damage, damaging insects, insects and disease, diseases. These indicators suggest that the desert region should make cooling services a priority and building resilience to heat-related impacts. Trees offer many benefits to urban areas, cool and increasingly hot summers that lie ahead, and then, again, noting the green box. Research done in the Coachella Valley have found areas shaded by trees or vegetation at ground surface temperatures more than fifty degrees cooler in the summer compared to those that are exposed. Exposed or impeded parking. This information I had access to, it's actually a draft of the urban, because we did urban greening, and I did a presentation over to Sebag. They're putting together urban greening guideline for the desert, which is gonna be very cool, so I reached out to them. And asked for them to provide a presentation once that is drafted and approved. This is a little slide that I like to use that which just kind of conveys what I was talking about earlier. You know, if you have, well, it's dark roof here, but if you have a regular roof, you have direct sunlight, you're looking at about a hundred and seventy-seven degrees Fahrenheit. You have a tree in the way, or if you have a, a cool roof, you're looking at a hundred and eleven degrees Fahrenheit, and that's a sixty-six degree Fahrenheit difference. And as you know, with that much difference, your AC again is running all day long. This slide I put in here, just for visual purposes, a lot of times when we're looking at doing. When we're planning out for. Strip malls. A lot of times we just look at trees and we put them here and there, or we'll ask for something like. A palm trees, if you will, because you know, they're pretty, they're iconic, when we think of palm trees, we can get to Coachella Valley or Southern California. You know, a palm tree really isn't a tree, it's a grass. And they don't, you know, it's. Other than their beauty, they're really doing a disservice to our community. Because where we could spend the same amount in one palm tree, we could probably plant several. Regular type. Local trees and provide shade for cars, provide shade for the pedestrians, and provide shade for those buildings. In which, again, are, you know, we're trying to reduce our energy consumption, and by that extent, greenhouse gases. And here it just kind of talks a little bit about that, and it also talks about doing parking studies. If you guys could ever help suggest parking studies, whenever there's a new big retailer coming in, I would suggest doing so. That way, we're not oversizing the parking lot, and again, we could utilize that other, some of that land where we go from rather the parking lot. You know, have a retention basin, create more trees, more bushes, stuff like that, that'll help reduce the temperatures of families literally going and shopping for us. So whenever you can, take a look at that, because you may be able to reduce those parking. Lots by anywhere by ten percent. Again, I threw this one in here for the same kind of thing, you know, if you're looking at a building, what exists? You know, I could say that I've seen several buildings that look like the top left-hand side here in Coachella, no trees, no nothing, it's just you go in, you shop, you head out. You know, if you're looking at adding trees, they're putting them on the west side of the building, you know, you're putting a protective entrance by adding an awning, or, I'm sorry, not an awning, yeah, awning in the front. Which keeps the sun from going directly into the store. These are simple things that we could do to help, along with, like, if you look at the picture, it looks like grass, and obviously, I wouldn't suggest grass, but. When you soften it up with, you know, greenage around the building, it keeps you, it, it transitions the, the air temperature as you're going in and mitigates from that. Hot air, when you're going in or coming out, there's many times during the summer where I've left the building, and I suck in that hot asphalt air, and I can literally feel it bringing my lungs, so. Those are things where I'm a full-grown adult, but if it's our little kids who are closer to the ground, or it's, you know, our grandma's, grandma's, non-estados. It's helpful when you guys do this and, and plan for it. So right now, these are pictures, these are the ones that I had shown when we're under construction, as you could see here at the. Business here, where that's, I think it's a real estate business, you know, someone. Had realized it a long time ago, and that, that tree's been there for quite a while, but that stuff that we do and we'll find here in Coachella that's done naturally, whether it's a house or some of our older. Retail spaces, but you could see there that they're getting that shade already, and then those palm trees, those palm trees are beautiful, but they're not doing much for, for the, for the property. Here's some more, which is them dropping the cementing, which I think, believe you guys are all familiar with. Then I went out there today, these pants are little, but I can't wait to take pictures of these five years from now, so we could see the difference. But it's, you know. I'm excited about this, I don't know about you guys, but growing up and seeing this, the way it used to be compared to the way it is now is a huge improvement. And a huge investment from the state for believing in us and believing that we could actually get this done. And then here's one, I traversed the. The intersection and jumped in the middle of the thing here and took a picture of it. And I'm alive in here today, so everything went well. Thank you, I'm glad that you guys had me. If there's anything I could ever do, or if I could come back and provide you guys updates from the, from my Icarp and what we're doing, or if there's anything local. I'll be sure to share that with Gabriel, and he could help send it to you guys, and that way you guys could attend some of these events and figure out what, or figure out, but. Kind of experience what some other communities are doing, and I've been promoting our community a lot, or our region in general, because everywhere else in the state's getting hot like us. I went to school up in San Diego for my degree. And places that you could find, you know, ten miles in would still be, you know, eighty, ninety degrees, now you go to those same places that are ten miles in. And they're going over a hundred degrees in places that, you know, didn't have HVACs, like my aunt lives out there, she didn't have an HVAC in the nineties, and as soon as the two thousands had come. You know, she went and had to install one, so things are getting hotter, states, the state is actually looking to us as a region, what we've done to. Survive these, you know, hot temperatures, and they're suspecting that other cities are gonna wanna do the same, that are actually closer to cold for them. So that's it for me, if you guys have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Thank you, Jacob, beautiful head to our city, and thank you for all the hard work. Just a couple of questions. In terms of that project, is there any future funding available, because I think that would be nice is to, can you continue that project all the way to airport if possible?
Yeah, we're, we're actually looking at that right now. We're looking at seeing what we could do that goes down through Grape, Grapefruit Boulevard, but we're also looking at our entrance on Cesar Chavez. Funds will become available. It, we gotta, you gotta keep in mind that we gotta take a look at how well our, our application would score. And we gotta make sure, before we submit anything, that, that we have a good possibility of getting it, right? That, that, keeping that in mind, keep in mind, when you're looking at approving, you know, tract housing, there's a lot of areas that are usually outside the walls of that tract. And I would recommend as much as you can is that, you know, the, the greener the better, you know, whether it's, it's stuff that's low line plant vegetation. Or stuff that's, you know, that are trees outside of it. One, it, it, it makes you feel good driving up to your community that is, you know, nicely decorated with vegetation, and then in the background, you're also thinking, especially if you have a family. Just all the birds and, and, and the animals and, you know, and all the insects and other stuff, bees. You know, as much as people don't like bees, you know, bees are very important to us, so anything that helps up pollinators, keep in mind that. Things that help that out also are beautiful for our city, so. You have my support anytime you guys ask for this.
Yeah, well, I support that wholeheartedly myself, so, yeah. Another question also is on the corridor that actually fifty-two, obviously, we have a park there, Central Park that's in the works, but. One of the focus points in terms of putting green would be, I think, ideal would be fifty-two and fifty, because we got the CB link, it's gonna connect to there, so we'll hopefully get a lot more activity from. Off the CB length into the city, so maybe that, that should be one of the focal points in terms of green trees and. Where people are riding, everybody could pull over and sit on a bench and cool off or whatever. But.
Absolutely, and, and I see you guys as a frontline people, right? You guys are our first line of defense before, before, well, if it ends up going to city council. You guys make things easier when you guys ask for it, because we could turn around as staff members and go, sorry. Our planning commission wants it, you know, they're the ones that are setting policy, makes it easier for staff's perspective, because then we could turn around and. And utilize you guys and your guys' voice that's, you know, this is what the community wants.
Another question also, Jacob, is I had a conversation with actually a couple of our councilmen, you know, next door in India. And I, I mentioned to him, you know, you know, obviously, La Quinta connection to La Quinta. And I I mentioned to him, you know, uh, you know, obviously La Quinta connection to La Quinta and. Some of their surrounding cities around Indio are beautiful. The one coming to Coachella is 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 probably, it's terrible. So I I I shared, you know, I I I shared, you know, my my expression to him saying, hey, look. We need to do something from Houston Lumber all the way to forty-eight. We gotta do something. And uh, he did mention that. And I don't know if he spoke to uh to Stephen or not, but uh, looking for information or guidance to uh to kind of guide him the right way. To actually fix that whole area and that area, put some more grain in there and, you know, it would be a beautiful entrance into Coachella. But it seems like the east side always gets beat up now, you know? That area is terrible. It's terrible that, you know, from Houston Lumber all that whole area, it just uh. It needs some work. So if there's any way you guys can collaborate with the with the people in Indio, I mean, I think that would be ideal for everybody.
Right, I hear you. And and you know what the funny thing is, is is back in the day when, I I don't know who had had done it, but someone. Had encouraged the city and the city ended up cleaning up all those oleanders that go along the the railroad track there on on our side. And I know it was like not highly looked upon, but I would say that I greatly enjoy those that are there. Because you could see what the alternative is. If it isn't, it just will look desolate or, you know, you've seen trash and stuff. And now we have meeting people constantly going through their uh maintenance, but at the same time making sure it's clean.
Yeah, I know. There's, that's been a problem and, you know, it's been lingering there for a while and it's just, it's terrible. But anyway, uh, hopefully, uh, sometime soon you guys can. And talk and then, you know, figure out something that will be uh that beautify that whole area. But I think that'd be ideal for both sides.
I hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jacob, for the presentation. Do uh my fellow commissioners have any comments or questions? No? Okay. And Gabe, do we? Since it was just a presentation, we don't have to, right? Okay.
Taking action.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Jacob.
Thanks, Jacob.
When that um urban greening guide comes out, I definitely have Seabag come down and do a presentation. There's a lot of great information on there, especially with what trees should be planted in uh the medians inside um strip centers and stuff like that. Because you don't want to put the wrong tree that's dropping sap or fruits on on your cars. So they, a lot of uh thought of went into it. And again, it was uh this great city that encouraged the rest of the region to take a look at stuff like this. So again, thank you guys for your help and and your dedication. I know you guys are putting in extra time outside of work to do this. So I appreciate it personally.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Jacob. And I think that would be ideal, maybe where we could uh get the palette of of trees and stuff. And we can incorporate as part of the ordinance and on our new developments and stuff. Thank you.
Hey, we're gonna move on to our public hearing calendar. And our next item is item number three. It's the AMPM convenience store alcohol sales.
Chair Vitan, Nikki Gomez, associate planner will be giving the presentation.
Thank you. And um, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the planning commission. My name is Nikki Gomez, associate planner. And as you were mentioning earlier, um, chair, that letter has gone out through. To you and the rest of the planning commission regarding its continuance. However, I just wanna uh just do a quick introductory to the project. And so, so this is conditional use permit three fifty for a AMPM type twenty-one alcohol license. Uh, the project site is located at the southwest corner of Avenue Forty-Eight and Grapefruit. Um, address is four eight zero five by Grapefruit Avenue. And specifically, this uh liquor license or application of is gonna be within the um. Establishment, the EMPM convenience store. So that is a five thousand one hundred square foot um uh store. And it is uh the the conditional use permit um is for the type twenty-one. Off sale general liquor license. And what this is, is uh is a proposal to authorize the sale of beer, wine and distilled spirits. And I just wanna also share that this uh convenience store, it has an existing type twenty. So it has just a sale of beer and wine. And so they're proposing to have the type twenty-one. And so when uh the uh the letter that the the applicant um sent over to us to request for a continuance. And that continuance actually is to a date certain of April twentieth twenty twenty-two. So that's two planning commissions meetings from now. And so um staff recommends the planning commission to continue um the consideration of resolution. Number twenty twenty-two, that's seven oh seven um on the date certain, which is April twentieth twenty twenty-two. As the applicant will need more time to evaluate the proposed project conditions of approval. Um, and that's uh my quick uh presentation. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer any. And you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um. So we are going to, do we have to make a motion? Um, council, sorry, do we have to make a motion for? Uh, to continue this item?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so can I get a motion to continue um the item that was just?
Chair, since you're gonna make an action, can you see if there's any public comment, please?
Yes, thank you. Do we have any, um, did we receive any public comments? I don't see anyone on the attendees, but did we receive any?
We haven't received any correspondence, yeah. And I don't see any other attendees looking to speak.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to uh continue item number three?
Motion to continue item three to the uh.
April twentieth.
April twentieth of twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. And can we get a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. And can we please get roll?
Commissioner Liang.
Hi.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Hi.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi.
Vice Chair Navarrete.
Hi.
Um, and Madam Chair Vitan.
Hi. Thank you. And we're moving on to our next item, which is our informational item.
Okay, um, I have a a couple of things to say. Um. One is that I know the planning commission was asking about having in-person meetings. And it looks like it's unanimous. Everyone would like to go back to in-person meetings. So uh, we're looking at options and how to make that work. Uh, so. One option is to do it in person, uh, where I think the planning commission meetings were happening before. But we don't have the capabilities right now to accommodate Zoom. Uh, if we were to do both, the hybrid in-person and Zoom, we would have to do it in the the council chambers. So I just kind of want to put that out there and then, you know, maybe uh you have some thoughts on both of those options. But uh, but it looks like everyone would like to go back to in person. There's really no objections to that. But uh. Just wanted to hear any thoughts from the commissioners.
Okay, and would we still, so the option of Zoom, would that be for like the public to join and and listen?
Yeah, so so the the Zoom wouldn't be required.
Okay.
Um, to to have the meeting. Um, but sometimes it's better to have Zoom. Because we have to limit the amount of people that can be at the meeting, right? So you kind of have to space everybody. Um, so the the flip side is, you know, do you have a potentially controversial topic? And then you can't fit everyone in the room. The only other alternative you can do is have Zoom and then everyone can kind of participate, right? So something to think about. Eventually, I think we'll be able to have the technology where we can do both in in the the that that conference, that uh. Plan commissioner uh chamber. Uh, we just don't have that. So I was thinking about doing the in-person for the next meeting. For April, it's April the sixth. So if we were to do that, uh, and we can try it, one you, one or the other, and then we could always change it from there. But uh, just wanna kind of get the thoughts of the commission.
If you, if you want for that one, I can volunteer to stay on Zoom for that meeting. So you can have a. Like one person on Zoom, so like the council does, it's fine with me.
Okay, then if we were to do that, there would be one commissioner on Zoom, then we would um work to to have that meeting. At the the old city hall in the council chambers. So if that works for everybody. Uh, we'll do that. So. And and I don't want to promise anything too. I do need to communicate with the IT manager to make sure it'll work, okay? So if something, if I have a hangup, then I will get back to you and let you know that uh, for some reason it doesn't work. So there, we we do have to get an IT person to help out with the meeting to make it work. So that's, if we can't get them to come out, then it's gonna be an issue.
Wow. Okay.
I think we can make it work.
It makes sense. Okay, I would be okay with, um, I wouldn't mind having them in the council chambers. It's, I'm I'm okay with it. I don't know if um commissioners have any other suggestions or comments.
I just wanted to clarify. So the only thing. That's holding it back is the tech in regards to the different areas, correct?
Yes, right, yeah, we don't have the technology where there's a camera that will allow the meeting on Zoom. Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm I'm totally with Steph on this. I don't mind doing it in the chambers as well.
I'm good, just with one condition, if I could sit on the mayor's chair.
To the chair about that.
I don't know, Commissioner. I might have to. All right, um.
Yeah, I'm I'm okay with that to go into the chamber. That'd be great to see you guys all in person.
Okay.
The other informational item I have is, we are trying to work with uh BB and K on setting up a future sequel workshop. So uh, I'm not sure what date that will be, but we're gonna, we're gonna work on that. So uh, we did definitely want to make opportunities for training. So I will let you know when that's gonna be, but probably sometime in the next couple of months.
That's great.
Just one to one, yeah, that'll be cool.
Yeah. Review really quickly, all of that. Okay, um, do we have anything else from staff?
Uh, just one more thing. So for the next meeting, it's gonna be pretty busy. I just want to give you an idea of what's gonna be on the agenda. So I believe the triple, triple E mixed-use project, this is a hundred eight-unit mixed-use. Uh, project on the corner of Baghdad and Sesar Travis Street. It's gonna um go to planning commission for your review and recommendation to council. So that's a pretty big project. Uh, and then the other is an electronic billboard on the freeway off of Vista del Norte. So there's, there's kind of two big items that will be at the next meeting.
Sounds good. It's gonna be a busy meeting. Okay. Thank you, Gabe. Okay. Since we've got no more items on our agenda, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting at six forty-five PM. It was great seeing everyone. I hope you all have a great evening and a good rest of your week. Thank you, staff. Thank you. Bye, everyone.